All right, shall we call this meeting to order? And we have, let's see. We're gonna start talking to Toby about the mower.
Yes.
And how that will fit into the budget. Toby, are you gonna need us to actually take a vote tonight?
No, so the mower is still available and they're holding it for us. So if you guys officially vote, but you make a motion to pursue it, essentially, no one's buying it right now. So it's okay. I don't know if you have it. It's not an agenda item.
We said we were just, for a special meeting, you kind of have to have it for a special reason. And so the reason is to do the budget, but this is part of the budget. So we can talk about it. What we can't do is make the actual formal decision. But we could vote to tell you to go forward and then ratify the vote at the next meeting, if that's what you need.
Well, it's more if that's what you need because somebody may snatch it out of thin air without making a decision.
Well, why don't you walk us through it? You sent us a whole bunch of stuff on it.
So I sent you the specifications. It has 400 and some odd hours on it. It has all the details of what it is. Asking price is $130,000.
And this is the one that Dana was using? And it's very well cared for because they have really strict.
Yeah. And there's a warranty for FY '25 that's included.
Like full coverage?
I don't know the exact thing, but I think it says in the note that I sent you, it's the details. It says about the warranty detail. It doesn't say what the complete is.
I don't recall seeing anything about the warranty, Toby.
It's June 25.
Yeah, so it's good until June 25.
Yeah, but it didn't say what it covers.
It does say exactly what it covers.
Oh, here it is.
What year is it anyway?
It's just a year old.
Yeah, so it shouldn't be a full coverage. Warranty or something.
I guess I can get you the particulars, but... So if you're happy with the hours and the equipment, which the road crew is happy about the equipment, the hours are not excessive for a one-year-old equipment. Then the question is, how do you pay for it? So currently, there's $63,500 in the heavy equipment account. And if you look at the budget sheet that I sent you, FY '24, there's $42,000 for the Western Star, which didn't get purchased on that line item. And there's $30,000 for the Ford F-600 that never got purchased. So there's roughly $72,000 unspoken for in the capital account.
Can I ask about that? Don't we eventually want to purchase those pieces of equipment that they were set aside for?
Well, so one is just that there's a double listing. So if you look, there's 2023 Western Star. It's just that they put it in the wrong place. So they put the money aside, but it doesn't come into effect until the next fiscal year of '25 because it was a late delivery and we bought it in arrears. So that $42,000 that was put aside to go for the first payment didn't need to be used. And you're putting it already into FY '25 of that truck. So instead of the 42 that's there, you have $33,000 that's coming up next year that's going to be in the capital budget. So that $42,000 is just unspent.
Spent.
Unspent. And the Ford, again, if you, that's, the Ford F-600 is to replace the CV.
Kari got muted.
And that still has not moved forward as far as...
No, we are.
Getting a price and/or moving ahead. So that again is not on the table at this point. So that $30,000 was put aside for that purpose. It will not be used until you move ahead in next year's budget or maybe in the year after that.
So help me understand the capital fund, though. Don't we keep the capital fund for future expenditures? Don't we try to build that up?
Well, you can. So the reason to have a surplus is if you all of a sudden end up with three or four vehicles that cost you money all at once, you want to use some of that to lower what those payments are in a year so that you don't have this yo-yo effect of, okay, I'm paying for one truck and I didn't put enough money away, and all of a sudden I got four trucks I'm paying for. And that capital line item just tripled or quadrupled, and you gotta put that in the tax payer bucket because that comes, those bills that have become due. And so if you say, well, let's put $50,000 down on this next truck, and that will keep us from then getting this big, at least for a year, it will keep it from skyrocketing up and down. So the smart move is to have some monies there where you can actually, I mean, you're essentially gonna now purchase a grader, but that's gonna be a 10-year as opposed to a five-year one. So you can spread that out, which means it takes longer to go through that purchase. So essentially, you can spend it all now and say, we're fine. There'll be no interest costs because you paid cash for it. So essentially, you're gonna save $14,000 to $20,000 in interest over five years. That's one reason to do that. Or you can take some of those monies that are either in the savings account, the truck account, or the monies that were put in the budget that didn't get spent and put a combination of either the full lease purchase for the full amount, or half of the amount, or whatever, and you can decide whether you want to do it when you take the loan or whether you want to do it in arrears. So right now, I've got two scenarios. One is to full $130,000, first payment due when you take the loan, and then five years. But that's like $28,000 dollars of interest over time. So the next one was to just pay $100,000, take a $100,000 loan. That almost cuts the interest to about $14,000. And that would use $100,000, I mean, it would use $30,000 plus the $20,000 of the first payment. So you're literally for $50,000, you'd get a $100,000 loan for five years and only $14,000 of interest. Now, you can do, you could do $70,000 or... Yeah, so my suggestion is probably a target to make a $50,000 down payment and $20,000 worth of interest, I mean, the first payment. So that would be the $70,000 that was sitting there that hasn't been used. That would leave the heavy equipment fund at $63,000, and it would just use up that money that was not applied and announced. And so again, you're now going to be taking a loan out for about $70,000 for five years, and that would probably be less than $20,000 a year, close to $20,000 a year. I can get the lease document to figure out what that is. The guy I'm working with is, produce whatever combination you want. So that, you know, that's probably the smartest thing to do is to put $50,000 down and pay the $20,000. That will then use up what's already unused in the budget, sitting there. I think that's the most economical way to deal with it.
And it leaves the other $20,000 or so...
No, it leaves the $63,000 untouched in capital.
It leaves $63 untouched.
So the $72 that's sitting there now that we didn't use, it'd be 50 plus 20, and that will then give us a $70,000 carried forward. Now, the other thing is, you already, in your next year's budget, you already had $28,000 in mowing. Now you can move that to capital and take the 23 out of there and reduce it to 20 or whatever into the next year's capital budget because you'll have to pick up that next payment in '25.
What are we looking at buying in the next fiscal year? What's due to be replaced?
So we've already committed to ordering a new 10-wheel truck, and that's already a leave in the next. But that again, that again is one year in arrears, so it would be '26 before the first payment. Truck would show up, but the first payment would be in arrears. So that would be FY '26 for that first payment, and you have time to plan on that.
But we're gonna need to get a grader.
Right.
And another truck.
No.
No, that's what's next. Okay. Yeah, you're, are you getting an handle on this stuff?
Yeah, we sat down and had the conversation, Card, Toby and I, the other day. I called around, I haven't heard back on the grader part yet. I have a buddy that works at John Deere, so I called down just to see what was available or pricing.
So the thing that always happens is towns that are about to buy a brand-new grader and trade in their old one, you don't know that that's happened until after they vote a town meeting. So sometimes there is an opportunity that things are coming in on trade, and you might get a 10-year-old one instead of a 28-year-old one that we have. So again, it would be talking to the upcoming in the meeting books whether or not people are planning to trade in or get rid of their less ancient equipment.
Yep, I agree.
So again, so that would be a savings. I mean, you still could take a 10, it would have to be a loan, and it would have to be approved by the town at a town meeting because it's more than five years. But we'd have to do the research and go talk to salesmen and vendors and say, okay, what do you think you've got coming and when is it?
Yeah.
You know? And again, so the problem is, as everything starts to add up, they get too close together, and then you're paying a lot every year. That's a problem. The only other thing, again, the only other possibility is, in order to shift how many trucks or equipment is in each year, you might want to trade one in earlier and change that frequency. I mean, we literally have four trucks. We really only deal with three, but then we have the spare that we've always had. But now we got five people plowed in the wintertime, so we need that truck. And we don't need it in the summer as much, but we still need that piece of equipment. And so if we're trading in the 2014 to the new 2024, '05 plow truck, and the 2017 is going to be the spare, so essentially it's a little bit more easier. So again, I can get the loan, the lease agreement any way you guys want. I'm just wondering if you decide.
Other questions for Toby? Jordan, you okay?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I would just like it to be the most economical choice. So we only have our capital, the extra money we have, it's only that $68,000 right now?
$72,000.
$72,000, okay. So you think it would be better to do the...
Well, essentially, you have money set aside that he's not going anywhere. It's gonna carry forward, so essentially, this is your opportunity to take care of it. I mean, you can also put it in arrears for another year, but that's gonna put it in the next year and make the number even larger.
No, I was leaning towards outright, but I wouldn't want to trade the capital fund.
Jamie, you got questions?
I missed the first part, but I think I'm up to speed and nothing specific right now.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you guys do make permission to hold it together, then we can work on the process of where you want it. And I'll put together the $70,000 down payment, I mean, the $70,000 move.
With the five-year loan, and the first payment, and then a five-year loan for the rest?
Right.
Does that sound good to everybody? I think we made it.
Remember, we had 28 in the budget. We do have 28 in the budget, so this will save all that.
Right, but the second year of the payment will have to be whatever it turns out to be as a...
Twenty.
So it might be 19 instead of 28. So it might be a $1,000 in that line item.
Yeah, okay. So what would happen is you'd come back to us with a contract?
Well, what I'll do is I'll contact the lease company that I sent you the copies I've had and redo it. So essentially, we have the whole...
And we'll have to sign it, right?
Right.
Yeah, so we could do that at the next meeting. Just one question. What's the rule for when we have to put it before the voters and when we can just decide to do a major capital expenditure?
So anything, so you can, within a five-year period, you can do whatever you want. The select board is...
Oh, yeah.
It's a five-year limit. The reason we're going to, the grader for 10 years, it has to go to town to be approved. So you can make motions and take care of things up to five years.
That's right. Okay, and there's no cap on how much?
And you can still go out there and ask them to approve it, but...
Yeah.
As long as, I think, the last two or three trucks, we've just had the select board decide that's what we needed, and it hasn't been any pushback.
Okay. Great, I think you've got what you need then, to go forward, and I'll put it on the next agenda that will...
And I'll get a copy of the full warranty as well, so if you guys feel good.
Okay, great.
Great.
Thanks for all that work, Toby.
Took me two phone calls.
Okay. Are you sticking around or are you...
Do you have anything else particularly for me?
None at the moment, no. I mean, I expect, I hope we'll get to the highway budget, but I don't know how far we'll get today, but we'll be fine.
All right. Thanks.
Thanks, I'll leave you first. Have a good, have fun.
Thank you.
Oh, that's right, you're going away tomorrow, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll get a run before the snow gets here.
I'll take you later, Eddie.
So, Kari, help me out here. I think what we should do is take the budget that was in your folders and start, let's just take it section by section. And take a good look at each section, or actually, no, I'm gonna take that back. Kari, we should talk about your wage proposal first.
Okay.
And two, we did have, we had been talking, you think there might be a place to squeeze some money out of the highway budget, too?
Really?
But we could use our segment grant this year, and we have money for next year, but it's $34,000, and if we kind of focused our energies on fixing those roads so we can get the reimbursement back.
So let's do the witness, and then we'll go to that, Ann, and then we'll start through this. And thank you for doing this.
Yeah.
So Kari sent us a memo.
So yeah, so obviously, as we talked about last time, most of the increases, a lot of the budget overall is with people, right? So we took a real hard look at office staffing. We can discuss...
Did you have a single pair? I don't...
Oh, no, what happened?
But I just wanna perform...
Well, that's just my, that was my mouse.
All right, just making sure.
We can talk about staff on the highway department next, but focusing on the office staff. I think the key change that's in this memo, this scenario, that I wanted to share with you is to have the town administrator serve as the treasurer and then support that with a part-time bookkeeper. And I think that that's workable. I, you know, I had a good conversation on Friday with Sandra about that. You know, she believes that can be done. You know, part of it is that things happen, of course, and like the year that happened just this past year was very different for the treasurer, just as it was for everybody else. So when there are unique things that come up and research needs to be done, that places an extra burden on the treasurer role that you wouldn't ask a bookkeeper to do. Bookkeeper is just gonna be doing data entry and, you know, certain routine tasks over and over again. And so anyway, that, those are just, you know, some concerns because, I mean, I really, I'm sort of, I don't know if I'm recommending, I guess I'm recommending this, but I'm just being transparent. I don't fully understand the ramifications of it. But what it does is it reduces what's in there as a full-time position to a part-time position. The savings on that is partially in wages. What I didn't, for this memo breakdown, is the savings on the benefit side. And that's significant because, I want Sandra to verify this, but the, you know, all of the benefits that we offer are, cost money, but the medical insurance is a really big chunk. And I believe in this, in our budget is that treasurer role is in, has a, on the family plan for medical. And so the combination of the town paying 90% of the premium, which is like $25,000, plus the HRA contribution that we make, because if you don't know, we have this high deductible, not even that high, but we have a, basically, the town contributes the full amount of the health reimbursement account. So you put those two things together, we're talking around $28,000. It's just a medical portion of what the town pays.
For one person.
For one person on the family plan. So, long story short, I think that, you know, the number that I presented in terms of wages will actually be quite a bit bigger, more than, and, you know, there's some other line items on there, but by next week, we'll, we can lay that out in more detail. So that's sort of the big, the big piece of that. As I laid out, we're trying to get a cost of living increase, at least a little cost of living increase for every position, including town clerk. We are also working with Barbara, frankly, on what her preference is for full-time. She wants to retain 40 hours a week. And I'll be honest, I think if we were designing it from scratch, you wouldn't necessarily go that route. But Barbara is so capable and knows so much about how this town operates, we might as well take full advantage of what she brings to the table and set it up that way, is my opinion.
Do you think that would free up some of your town administrator duties so you could do more of the treasurer work?
It would have to. It would have to, so for example, I think she would continue to play a pretty big role with the select board doing, you know, for example, all the follow-up that happens after these meetings. She is, you know, even the same night, she's emailing people and like, here's what the decision was, we need this and that, and here, you can do this, and all those sorts of things because I would be focused on road commissioner and treasurer to a large extent. And one of the notes you might notice in there is this model does require a foreman and someone who's capable of performing in that role. So I'll stop there, see what thoughts you have, concerns. Do you want me to continue?
Well, let's see.
Anybody? So that's the decrease in $16,000 projected?
Uh... Let me... So many different numbers.
Let's see.
In my memo, I think it says $28,000.
Okay.
Is that what you're saying?
Oh, increase, increase, yeah.
Treasurer went from, you had 49 to 50, to a bookkeeper at 31, 200.
Right. And again, that is just for wages. It does not factor in any of the benefits or payroll taxes or that sort of thing.
Which is almost equal.
Yeah, yeah, it is equal.
Yeah.
So...
Jamie, you got any questions here? You with us?
I'm with you. I don't have any questions. I think it looks like the good path forward in this section.
I guess the only question I really have about the bookkeeper position is, I think you'd, you'd mentioned that you'd spent time talking to Sandra about it, and that $30,000 an hour is attractive enough to get somebody to...
That was her opinion. She suggested that number. I already had it in mind, just based on previous conversations, but she thought that that would... She's also clear that that's, I mean, the labor market is what it is, and bookkeepers are as hard to come by as anyone. So I don't know how far to go down this next thread, but she did start thinking, and she has been thinking about her transition quite a bit, and, you know, can that be as a transition or as a permanent arrangement, could that be contracted out at something that's affordable?
Yeah.
So that's something I would like to explore as well.
Yeah, I guess that's kind of where I was heading. It seems like Sandra's the only one with intimate knowledge of town finances and its bookkeeping that's in arm's reach, and I'm just curious about what the, what's realistic? You know, what, what will we actually realize? I mean, we can, we can talk about trying to find somebody for the position or creating the position, but will we actually find it? And then what does it look like if we really do need somebody to perform those services to make sure that the town administrator and everybody else can, can serve their roles? And what does it look like if we have to go to professional services or accounting firm to fulfill that? But I guess if everybody's comfortable with that dialogue and the numbers associated with it, and it provides enough room to seek out those services in the future if we need to, it is what it is.
So something I'd like to explore more, I'll say two things about it. One is I have the concern about filling the position, whether it's full-time, part-time.
Right, any, any.
Just, just as a concern. And the other thing is that Sandra's recommendation was explore it with Nemrick, Wendy Wilton specifically, because she believes there's an efficiency to be had there. Wendy did it for us. Wendy works with the Nemrick system every day, knows our particular situation. And Sandra's opinion is she could, if she's available to do it on a transition or a more regular basis, would be much faster, much more efficient than anyone we could hire and train up. So it, you know, something worth exploring.
So will you be doing that before the next meeting? So we'll have those, that information?
I'm gonna try. Wendy's, I guess, a waiver part of the week, although...
So we'll be talking during the morning, and we'll do payroll, and then just by mid-afternoon?
Yeah, and part of where she's gonna be is a training that I'm attending on Wednesdays. If I need to on quarter or... Anyway, I'm gonna do my best to nail as much of this down as I can, or at least take the next steps before next week.
Other questions about this piece of it? Okay, you have more to say, right, about this?
That was all on the office staffing side.
Oh, well, then let me ask you about delinquent tax collector. How are you envisioning that piece?
Go ahead. So I didn't realize this, Sandra pointed this out, but the statute, this is a separate function, and that's why it always shows up on the budget.
As a separate item.
And on the financial statements as a separate item because it is something separate. It's often combined with the bookkeeper function and helps sort of round out the hours. But if we're thinking of it as part-time, then we will need to figure out how to get that work done. I will say that Sandra volunteered that this is something that she would continue to do for some period of time. She would not, if we wanted her to, she could continue, so that, that would be helpful. It's also, I mean, it's budgeted at eight hours a week, or, yeah, eight hours a week, and that's what we've been paying. However, my understanding is it's, the work is really condensed or seasonal. And so there may be alternative arrangements that we could recruit somebody from the town, say.
Yeah, I noticed you knocked $1,000 off of it.
And that was her recommendation, that would probably be attractive enough to somebody. It doesn't, it doesn't sound like it requires someone with intimate knowledge of our, you know, of how to, you know, do bookkeeping or financial work. They need to be organized, they need to be diligent, they need to have a, they need to be persuasive, I guess.
They need to be good people person.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so that was the intro. What was, did you have a specific question about it?
That was, I just wasn't sure how, who you were envisioning would do that.
Yeah.
So that would be looking to somebody else? To be determined.
Yeah, I think... Yeah, I think, um...
Could be Sandra, could be Wendy, no, Wendy couldn't do that.
No, Wendy could not do that. It would have to be someone, you know, here, here in the town, I think. And I think we would have some time to figure that out, was my sense, between, you know, March being sort of slow season for this work, although there's some, and, and Sandra being willing to stay on to do that portion. But it would be something we need to figure out.
And what's the bottom line? How much money do we save? Did you calculate it with the payroll and all that, if we went with this scheme?
I mean, I kind of hate to put it out there, but, without Sandra verifying it, but somewhere around sixty-four thousand. So three percent of the budget, which is kind of...
That's a good chunk.
It cuts down to a ten percent increase, and that's, that's not nothing.
It's a good start.
That's not nothing, yeah. Okay. So, I don't think we need to act on this tonight. We'll talk about it at the next meeting. Are we ready to move on? Okay. Did you want to talk about the road position?
Well, so I, I don't want to go into too much detail, because it's very preliminary. This is actually something that Jamie and I talked about on our way back from the DAN meeting on Friday. But we, we are operating on the assumption that we need five drivers on our highway department, and we need a foreman. And so we, we have five currently, two are part-time, but we don't have a foreman. Well, and then backing up, Donnie and Toby and I met on Thursday, and Donnie confirmed what we had been thinking, and this is based, part of the research that I did with neighboring towns. And we really ought to be thinking about the foreman position, that's thirty dollars an hour, probably as a, as a minimum, in, in order to attract someone that can do it. And so, and so that was okay to start putting the word out. And so we were preparing to advertise it, let the, the current road crew know that we were doing that, and one of the employees said that that might change things for them, that they're interested in discussing it more. So they were gonna explore it with them. If there were a way to hire internally for the foreman position, and we could have a flexible arrangement with the two part-timers, so that they'd be, in the winter hours, the winter season, they would be flexible enough that they, all five of them can drive on, on a snowy day when we really needed them. Then, from a budget point of view, we could eliminate an entire position, which would really be a big deal, because then we're, we're talking about hours, we're talking about a significant amount of overtime, the medical insurance and all the rest. And so I'm gonna do my best to explore that. But I think it's gonna take more than a week to kind of nail that down. Partly, partly because Toby's away for the next two weeks. But that, that's sort of the germ of it. And it, it kind of relates to what we talked about, and it relates to what Jamie and I have talked about as well. And I'm sure other people have thought about it. I don't know if that's been part of your discussions at all with, with the crew over the last year, but...
Oh, it's ours internally?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the part-timers, and how long will the, I think one part-timer is...
Half.
I don't know how long he's gonna, you know, stay on. And then the other part-timer, I don't think, I think he would stay with us, but I think he'd also be okey-dokey to move with Mosey somewhere else, you know, having a, a full-time in lieu of two-part-time, but then that would create a winner problem, yeah.
I think it's a good idea, starting with that. I mean, you, you lose help, which is kind of one of the things that happens. But I think the idea of it, especially hiring somebody that's already functioning in the position, not the foreman position, but as a crew member, I, I think they are gonna know what they need more than somebody outside, necessarily. So I think, I think that's a good idea.
Okay, well, we'll explore it and we'll report back as soon as we can.
Yeah, I, I think that, if I could add, add to that, you know, I think we, we briefly kind of had some conversations about hiring internally, and, um, and there's no real objection, other than we need to make sure that whoever's gonna be in that position is gonna be able to direct, direct the crew and handle the, the nuance that comes with that. And it just doesn't turn into, you know, various forms of triangulation and disengagement and that sort of thing. I mean, it's a small crew, we can afford to lose and try to find other, other folks. So, you know, I think, um, I share the kind of observation, you know, that there's, there's an obvious, obvious need for kind of somebody to take the leadership role around scheduling and, and prioritizing of work and that sort of thing. And, and it's great to have somebody in-house who knows where everything is in town and, and the more nuanced stuff, but, um, with, with the workload that, that the town administrator has and all of the other kind of soft management stuff that's gonna come with the grants and, and finances and capital planning and that sort of thing. Great that we can kind of take that off the, the plate of a, of a road foreman, but it really puts a lot of emphasis on making sure that person can kind of lead, lead the crew and do the work.
Yeah, and part of, sorry, Jamie? That Donnie and I had talked about, and I think you and Donnie and Toby have, but, working with either the crew or whatever identified people, between now and like March, and really coming up, which is something that we had hoped to do this summer before the floods, on a comprehensive plan, like these are the roads we're gonna hit. We've got the grant from this year that we got a waiver to do it next year, so we can resubmit it in May, the guy will come out and, or not. We can do that work, we get the reimbursement, we can submit the second grant. But having, uh, you know, because I think that's one of the areas that was challenging for them is there's eighty-seven miles of road, and like, what do we, and if we have like a clear cut, it makes it easier on you, it makes it easier on the foreman to be like, hey guys, this is a plan that we came up with way back when, and this is what we gotta knock out this week and next week, and, and so on. So that would provide some structure to, um, a foreman to be able to implement, you know, be less kind of willy-nilly and trying to do this or do that.
Jamie, you had something?
Oh, just, I'm in full support. I, you know, I was chatting with Kari Friday and looking at the budget, thinking, wow, we're, we're adding, the foreman is a whole new position, but we already have five drivers in the winter. So I, I mean, I think this is something we've talked about for a while, and the logical direction to go.
All right, well, Kari, you said you may not have this information next week, but we are looking at finalizing the budget. I guess we'll have that conversation next week. We'll just have to, you'll have to give us your best, whatever, projection.
I'll, I will do that.
Yeah.
This is hard, because there's a number of moving pieces here.
I know. Well, can Donnie help you with things that, with Toby gone? I, I mean, I don't really know.
Potentially. You wanna do a job interview?
Sure, as long as it's honest.
You enjoy those, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll be in touch.
Yeah, let me know.
Okay. Great. Anne, you had some things?
Oh, with those grants, um...
What grants?
So these are the municipal, oh, the grant for road, whatever. I can't, I'm not good with that.
The ones that we have to put in every year for state assistance.
So we had twenty thousand for this year, which we weren't able to use. Um, and there is a waiver, so we can use it again next fall or next summer, between like May and September, October. And then we've also been granted fourteen thousand. So it's thirty-four thousand total, which in theory, I would think we could kind of reduce a mere, perhaps material cost, because there would be some reimbursement, and focus on the segments. They don't, the areas that get worked on include sections of the road that aren't directly connected to a watershed, but the overall, you know, you get a, a reimbursement for each section. So that would be a way to pull in thirty-four thousand that we don't.
Right. But don't we get another grant next year?
So we have, so we have the twenty thousand from this year, we get to use next year, and we have fourteen thousand for next year.
Because we didn't use them this year, correct?
Yes, so the twenty thousand rolls over, and then we have an additional fourteen.
Fourteen, okay.
And then as I had talked to you about, for the year following, you know, the next year that we can be looking at submitting for structures grants and things to do some of the larger culverts, not next year, but the year after.
So would you then reduce something in this budget?
Yes, that I would think that we might be able to like reduce some of the material costs.
That's what you were saying, like the sand or something?
Yes, that, you know, the things that we would typically use, because we'd be getting that reimbursement back, and then just really focusing, I mean, a priority we're gonna have to probably have in the summer is really gonna have to start removing ash trees that are along the roadway, because they're gonna start falling soon, and that's a huge, huge project, too. So, um, we had talked about getting together with all the, and the guys, and really kind of coming up with the plan for the summer now, picking up those road segments, getting, you know, the, the current grant can probably, he had already looked at it, and it looked good, so we can resubmit for those same roads, but we can pick the additional roads and kind of map out what the summer's going to look like, including like tree removal and those things.
Kari, if we were to do that, rather than reducing line items in the budget, would we add something on the income side?
That sounds like it, yeah. Yeah, bring the net down, but we would spend the money, we're just, we're just...
So it'd be twenty thousand more than we were expecting in income?
Yeah.
It's the way we were...
Thirty-four thousand.
Well, but we're getting the fourteen next year, and, I mean, that is expected, right?
That is expected.
So it's twenty thousand unexpected that we would...
I'm gonna need to go over with you exactly where it is.
Okay. Where it is.
We can do that after.
Yes.
But you're saying it's, it's twenty?
Mm-hmm.
So I guess that brings up another thing for me as we're going through the budget. What, what hasn't been transparent to me, like through this process, is we've got lump sums for material, and, um, we, we don't generally have things broken out relative to like capital improvements, or, because, for a lack of a better term, to, to the roadside. Things are project-based, or would otherwise be like special grants that are coming in that are outside the scope of our general, our general permit grant that we get from the state, like just based on whatever mileage we have. And I think that's an area where it'd be nice to kind of start to see some of these things broken out. I, I don't know if we have the ability to, to do that, because of the way that we have things structured in like NEMRIC. I know sometimes we can't really push, we, we can't just like create more line items, because we have specific accounts for things, uh, or, or coding for things essentially in the budget. But if there were a, like a supplemental document that's tracking what the projects are, what the estimated material costs are, and what percentage of that is, it is of the, of the overall material budget. I think the tree, the tree removal is a good example. I have a, a hard time saying, okay, well, this is what we're gonna budget for tree removal, without looking at like, what, what are the estimated hours for something like that? And does it, does it make sense? You know, there's, there's a whole bunch of roadside maintenance that didn't get done this year, because of the weather and because of the mower situation, and the mower only covers a portion of it, you know. So if we're looking at a massive tree removal campaign and a backlog of work, does it make sense to lump that up, like lump that all together and contract it out to, to a service that could likely go through it much more efficiently? Deal with the, deal with the ash trees, but then also deal with a backlog in, in tree maintenance, or roadside tree maintenance that, that likely needs to be done, too. So, you know, making those discretionary decisions is hard when it's just big chunks of money towards materials and...
So it sounds like that's a job...
Oh, I was gonna say, Sandra, I think can pull out specific, I think she could pull out how much we spent on sand, how much we spent on culverts, how much we spent on fuel, how much we spent. I think she could tease out those things, and I think it would be helpful, because it is kind of unclear. You know, we have like this big, huge stake, and it's like, things are, and even internal mechanisms within, I mean, there was, um, you know, they always kept track of what they were doing, but like the FEMA level of documentation, I put this length of this culvert that was purchased at this place, and this section of road at this location, you know. Like having very clear documentation of what, yeah, happens where. Because then you can know what you need.
Yeah, so that's a longer project.
It is a longer project.
It's you sitting down with maybe Sandra, maybe Kari.
Yes.
And maybe the foreman.
But I think now, I don't know, did you start that? I think they're keeping track of how much sand they're taking out now.
So actually, I, I talked to them the other day about, I think that's a pretty good idea to keep track. They actually said it to me. But I think they need to start keeping track of what goes out and what comes in. You know, because just saying, okay, we need three thousand yards, well, there's a lot more than three thousand yards sitting there. You know, some winters you're gonna use five thousand, some winters you're gonna use a thousand. You know, it, it really depends, but I think keeping track of that, so you have a better understanding of, okay, well, we need this amount going forward, and have something to kind of base it off, not just saying, well, we need three thousand more yards. Yeah, and it's gonna be, it's gonna be weather dependent, you know. We're, years are gonna be, you know, very different material consumption-wise, and, and, and that's why, you know, I think it, it, it's gonna be helpful for us to have that information. You know, sand's an easy one, in winter times, an easy time to think about it, but like gravel's a way squishier situation, and, you know, if, we're never gonna be able to budget for a summer like we had this year. Uh, but there's, you know, it's pretty easy to say that like these are your five projects for the next five years, and the amount of money that needs to be set aside for materials and culverts, you know, that I would think that we would have, I would put culverts in a different, a different category than, um, than just your general grading material that you're gonna have for, for road maintenance through mud season or something like that. And it'd be nice to see like what those, what those caches are, you know, separately. And I think it's gonna come down to hours, too. You know, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to decide like what we want, what we want them to spend time doing, relative to the scope of those projects.
Okay, you ready to move on to the budget itself and take it section by section? And talk about things we might change? So let's start with the select board section. Donnie, do you have a copy of your budget?
No, I'm just reading, I'm going offhand.
Oh, all right. Oh, yeah, because you don't, this won't show you the...
I think if I look at too much paper, I might fall asleep.
All right. I'm not sure about the best way to do it. Shall I just open it up? Does anybody have any comments on that section, or questions, or observations? Okay, let me take it like this. Select board stipends. Now, that was raised, it was a thou, supposed to be a thousand dollars each. It was raised at town meeting, on the floor, as you recall.
It was actually removed originally, and then...
Well, yes, there was that, too.
Thanks, Barbara. No, Barbara McAndrews, I think, is the one who, who added it back in.
Yeah, and then Barry raised, that was Barry Bernstein, yeah. Do you wanna leave that where it is? You guys think that's a fair thing to do?
Sometimes I have a higher one for the chair, and the over ones for anybody else.
No, I, let's not worry about that right now.
I think, I think it's fair to leave it where it is. I mean, I appreciate kind of the altruistic approach, but I know I've certainly sacrificed priorities this, this year. And those priorities have costs, and that's a pretty incremental dent in the costs.
And if you want to give it to the DAN fund, you can.
Okay, um, recording secretary, I noticed, has been reduced, and I'm not sure who did that or exactly why, maybe based on the number of hours Rose is actually spending?
I don't know the history of that.
Okay. Okay. Credit card fees, we can't do much about. Professional fees, I still don't know what this is.
I emailed Sandra today, I haven't heard back.
Haven't heard back, so I, I'd like to hear from Sandra because legal fees is the next line, so it's not the lawyer. I don't know what, what that is, and I notice it's not in this budget because we don't know what it is. The audit, we can't do much about. The website is what it is. I will note that education and training is eight hundred dollars just for us. There's another line item for education and training for staff, and then probably another one, I'm not sure about this, in the highway budget for the road crew and the road for. So I'm thinking we could probably knock that down quite a bit. I know I've taken a couple of classes with VLCT and they cost ten dollars each, and I did it over the internet, so I didn't even have to travel. Maybe some of you wanna go to some things, I don't know. What do you think?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's good to have a budget in there.
I don't know how many things actually cost substantial money. It seems like most of the trainings or courses or things that I've done are either free or low charge.
Yeah, well, um, what would it have cost? Do you remember the one that was this fall where all the select boards go and they all meet each other, and none of us went to it because we were all exhausted?
And also employed full-time doing other things. I mean, that's one of my biggest gripes about the VLTC. I don't have a better recommendation, but like the,
Then everything's at nine.
Everything, well, everything's just during the day, during the work week, and I mean, how, how are we supposed to get to those? Even when they're on Zoom, I mean, hide in the closet and book myself out, but, you know, it's, it's, again, I don't, I, I don't like bringing up problems without solutions, but that's, that's a real problem. But they're also very inexpensive, so, yeah, the eight hundred dollars, unless we're trying to compensate for mileage for an entire group, but even then.
Yeah, I, I noticed this year we've used a hundred and seventy dollars in education and training, and I don't have any clue how we got that high, having spent twenty dollars myself. Has anybody else done anything?
I went to the emergency management conference. I don't know how much that cost. Barbara took care of it.
Hmm, okay, so maybe it was some things you did. Okay.
And I've done both things, but they're all free online, so that hasn't cost.
The VLCT town fair looks like it's a hundred-ish for a day or two hundred for two days.
Yeah, so if we all went to that, there's our easily, that's easily our eight hundred.
Well, and I don't, I don't know that maybe we all need to go to them, so I think if we drop that to three hundred bucks or.
No, I just thought of something else, though. That's where Kari would get his, wasn't it? Or no.
No, he has the staff one.
You'd be in staff, okay.
I think Sarah's thinking of Kari, that's why I'm, so if you wanted to have any of her, you would do that.
I think that's fine, Jordan, knock it to three hundred, you're thinking, and see what happens.
Yeah.
You guys okay with that? Okay. You got that, Kari?
Select board training decreased by five hundred.
Yep.
I think I had aspirations to do more, but just, yeah, time-wise.
I think that's happened to all of us, yeah. Yeah. Copy, these other things, mileage reimbursement, I think that's probably about right. Judging from expenditures, it doesn't look like we can do much about the other things.
So mileage reimbursement is what, exactly?
Well, if Barbara goes to the bank, I suppose she can get her mileage reimbursed.
Under the select board though, or is this for overall?
I don't know why it's in the select board account. You know, things that have under that are things like when John is turning around, when you lift her, sometimes they'll put that mileage out. Toby has done mileage reimbursement. Barbara did it for something she had dragged from the car for.
Okay.
Interesting, that should probably be moved to general office. There is not a mileage thing there.
In the select board, because, yeah, I was told there wasn't one for, 'cause I've driven around for animals.
And as a road commissioner, I mean, I feel like that makes sense, especially a road commissioner should, and that's up to you all.
Yeah, but that's past and done, but.
We, it, it might not be a bad thing at some point to decide what, what counts for mileage reimbursement and what doesn't, and help me decide.
Sounds like we do need a discussion for that. I don't think the animal control officer gets, I'm not sure.
I don't think that, I don't know that Wilson never did, but we should because it can be a substantial amount of driving and.
Well, he's got a thousand dollars for expenses, so I, I guess.
So I think that's okay.
Yeah.
I know Wilson never did, but it is, it can be a lot of driving around.
Well, maybe we just leave that as is, and that's something to be researched a little bit.
The three hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I, I didn't catch whether or not, so if anybody else submits mileage as office staff, does it come out of that budget, or do we need to have one added to?
No, office staff.
I think that it should be, 'cause I didn't think like select board members got reimbursement, so it seems like it should be added to general and then.
Oh, no, they don't have that.
We would need to determine.
Okay.
We can move it.
If we, yeah, you know, driving to Lindenville for whatever road training thing that we did or.
It, yeah, it seems most appropriate to move it into the general town.
Okay, move to office staff. But shall we just level fund it for now? Looks like there's been nothing, I'm looking at the report, as of October, nothing had been spent out of that budget this year. But that.
I think I did, but I don't know why it's not in there. I thought I did it, submitted it in October.
Okay, well. Okay, anything else on select board? All right, let's look at town clerk. Am I looking at the wrong one here? Oh, no, okay, so town clerk really should be fifty-seven twenty-eight for her COLA.
Yeah, we'll get that changed.
Okay. And same with the assistant town clerk, she should be at fifty-five seven twenty-three. The town, oh, she's assistant town clerk slash administrative assistant.
Right, so this is a bad one.
Yeah.
Right.
Anything else anybody wanna question in that one or?
Well, the other one's a fix, like the land record books are just.
Yeah.
That one's a fix, that depends on how many books and how much paper I have to buy. I don't decide though. When I run out of books, I need to buy more books.
Yeah, and, and you thought about that number and it made sense to you?
Given the last couple of years, I think that's a solid estimate.
Okay, all right, can we move on to listers? Again, there's not much, not much we can do there. That pretty much is what it is. Are you making noises like just a minute ago, something to say or?
Maybe.
One thing, I mean, that's significant is the professional assessor, and I appreciate that we've got it in there as a partial, 'cause it'll ease the blow if we go to full-time for following year, which presumably we're heading in that direction. So just pointing that out.
Yeah, thank you, you're right, yeah.
It, it won't be quite the sticker shock the next budget.
And we don't know whether somebody will run to fill Wilson's slot. If nobody does, then we may have to hire somebody sooner rather than later.
Well, two people ran for Steve's slot last year, right? That was Steve and.
Grant Ornstein.
Yeah, so.
So maybe.
Was that, was that relative to changing in the certification? I know that Jan and John were both saying that one of the big changes is that state requirements for being certified as a lister is going up, so we likely will either need to consider, you know, compensating people for maintaining the state required training or do what everybody else is doing and hire it out to a proficient, a professional appraiser.
Yeah, I think, I think Jan was suggesting we might wanna hire somebody toward the end of next year.
Well, Steve might be making changes anyway that.
I know, 'cause aren't they talking about taking it over?
Taking listers together, so we're gonna know.
This state does such a great job.
Fabulous.
Yeah.
So you're okay with leaving the six thousand in there?
Yes, but we don't know what a law would be changing in the next year with that whole thing.
Okay, all right, town administrator. Let me see, and then we have the twenty, wait a minute, how does this mesh with the town administrator assistant?
That line would go away altogether.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought.
The treasurer section would change.
Since we're, we're lumping her job together?
Yeah, so the, the next version of this, you will see, will look more like a town.
Okay. Okay. So that is what it is. Then the town treasurer will drop down to thirty-one two hundred.
Right.
An assistant town, oh, yeah, okay, so there's a little bit, that'll be fine. Moving along, auditor and town report. Teagan and I looked at that a bit again today, and that's, seems to be about right. There, delinquent tax collector may drop by a thousand. Postage, everybody go buy your forever stamps now, 'cause they're going up when? Next week, two weeks.
Sixty-eight, so it's not horrific.
What is it, girl?
Sixty-six.
That's a lot when you're mailing something to the whole town.
Yeah.
One inch just went up earlier this year. Didn't go up earlier this year too?
Yes, in June or July.
Elections postage, that one.
Yeah, 'cause we're gonna have a couple of elections, right?
We have three elections, and it costs about a thousand bucks to mail things to all the voters in town.
Yeah, why, why are we having three? That's the.
The presidential primary, the state primary, and then November.
All right, let's take a look at general office then. Teagan, you and I talked about some of these things today too.
And this might change if we go to NEMRIC for more more contracting again.
So this might go up?
It could go up, but that would be taken, I think, taken from the treasurer salary spot, or the, especially if you're town salary.
Okay.
What about NEMRIC support disaster recovery?
So usually contract services is what we agree upon ahead of time they'll do and support disaster recoveries anytime there are other issues.
Wait, could, could we stop for a sec? Donnie, you're not up to speed on this. I hear you guys whispering about this. Maybe we should explain to Donnie what NEMRIC is.
She, yeah.
So here's the commercials on WDEV, when they have, they have commercials on.
Unfortunately, I didn't.
Um, when we didn't have treasurer, we contracted with them. They helped municipalities do all sorts of things, including financial stuff. And we have someone to work with, Wendy, who even now has done our payroll the whole time. I've been here, even though Sanders is back, she said she's not doing payroll. Wendy has payroll. She was basically our treasurer last year. She knows our budget as well as any non-council person can know it. So that's, that's that. But NEMRIC offers all sorts of other services and stuff to towns.
They offer all kinds of accounting and financial services.
Yeah, and they, they develop the accounting system that we use, so.
And all the modules that.
And their vision is to serve us, it's, I mean, it's a great resource.
Yeah.
So programs we use with calculating taxes, with doing dogs, with doing our RIN lists, with all the office stuff, it's all in software that they have created for Vermont towns.
So Wendy Wilton, you keep hearing us mention her. She's, she's our NEMRIC person who's been helping us.
So, so in other words, every, every year there's some level of support that they're offering. It's not all this disaster.
And then COTS is our, the online land records, so that's the thing that allows people to look at their date from their living room if they want to or do things like that. It's another safe place to have it in case anything happens with physical records. IT support and consulting is Arby Tech. They help us with all our tech decisions. You talk to them.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, that's them.
Okay, doing my email there.
Doing your email, yeah. They do a lot of just email, but I feel like this year has been a lot of email.
So Teagan, you really bumped up the education and training thing here. You think Kari's gonna.
Well, I, like, if I go to one or two conferences, which I'm still wondering a lot, I was planning to, Barbara has never been to the clerks and treasurers conference, and I thought she ought to go, in fact, I almost made her go this year. We're gonna, we're both gonna go. It's gonna be in Montpelier, and we're gonna have to pay for a hotel, and we're both gonna go, and then the hotel in Montpelier was no longer available. Um, but I figured if Kari goes to one, and Barbara goes to one, and I go to one, I, I don't know that we'll use it, and you could probably lump it down to nine hundred or a thousand if you wanted to. I know that's a small change, but if you, you could do that.
Can, can we back up to the IT support contract and the consultant? What's the difference between the consulting and the support contract? Support contract is just like their annual, their annual contracted amount for a certain amount of support relative to our existing infrastructure, right? And then.
So Sandra split all these out, and she crunched numbers her way, and I haven't had a chance to talk to her about how she landed on each of these. So that's what I'm assuming. It's, one is what we ran ahead of time for their monthly stuff, and that includes a certain number of hours of presentation, and then the other one is when things arise and we need trainings and we have issues.
Okay.
So consulting is, oh, training is, is other kinds of training other than IT, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
It might be nice to see.
Yeah, I might.
Well, if there's a way of breaking out, yeah, that the support contracts, you know, that's, that's their, their maintenance kind of contract with us, and it comes with a certain amount of hours, and I'm sure we blow through it and things come up and there are more acute needs, but, you know, with like the added cost of the email services and that sort of thing, like if, if that were in a different bucket, and other IT expenses, like if we have other software expenses, that even if we're going through that, it'd be nice to, to kind of see those broken out separate, separately. If they're being lumped into either of those, it, it would be nice to see them pulled out.
And I realized that this year when I was looking at the software line on the budget, it's, it had our old things on there. It didn't have any of the office stuff. The office stuff was, I think, still under Arby Tech, so that finding way to pull that out here and wasting making those in the right spot.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Oh, for my education with the IT consulting, is that like when we get help?
Yeah.
With our email?
Yeah, so Barbara and I.
And like, how much does that cost per, I mean, I guess like if it's gonna be two hundred dollars for fifteen minutes, this is how you turn your outlook on, Anne, then maybe I should ask someone else.
So it's not cheap, and I do recommend if you have a thing that you think Jordan or I or anyone can help you with, try to do that first. But sometimes there are things like log-on stuff that just isn't working, we have to go to them, like we can't fix someone's log-on problem, but if you have a question about how do I get this document to share with Jordan, then please call me or Jordan and don't call Arby Tech.
I don't call Arby Tech ever. I think you had him call in that I finally could like get the email to work, but.
Yeah.
'Cause I was just being stubborn, but.
And I'm by no, by no means a whiz, but like one of the conversations that we were having as, kind of when in our last check-in was was like, let's, let's try to use them as efficiently as possible and train a trainer, so they, like we have somebody or two people in-house who are proficient enough and understand the guts of things that, that they can, they can help do some of that. One of the things that is still kind of a blind spot that, that we brought up is that, you know, we don't have like backend admin privileges for the Microsoft accounts and like even for just like housekeeping and, and triaging, just very basic level stuff, but none of the accounts have it. Part of the problem is it's all so new, we, we don't really know who should have it, and at the time, we didn't have a town administrator or anybody who was familiar enough with that system, but at this point, you know, I think it, it's reasonable to think that somebody should, should have the keys to that so that we don't have to make those phone calls every time. And it'd be, yeah, so I, I would, I would hope that like that, that IT consulting is, is a number for setting up like those types of. And it'd be, yeah. So I, I would, I would hope that like that, that IT Consulting is, is a number for setting up like those types of meetings where it's like, okay, we're gonna have you guys help facilitate us for an acute period of time. And then out of that, we have a very specific objective of being able to do it ourselves.
Yeah.
Who, who made the request to increase the consulting to nine next year? Anybody here?
To increase the...
No, I think, I think that's what Teagan was saying, that, that Sandra had, had recommended those numbers relative to what she saw as expenses again, you know, from IT. So we, we should probably...
Would we like to go over this year's ending?
I'm sure we are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure if you look at it, we've been going over what we expected.
Let me try to find that here.
By theory, next year because everyone is going to be more knowledgeable in knowing how the things work that it shouldn't be.
It's another thing we can, we can drop down a little bit and if we go over, go over a little bit.
Yeah, I know, kind of see it like with the...
Well, as of October, which is one quarter of the way through the year, we had spent forty percent this year, of this year's budget.
Yeah, and it, and it would be good to, again, look at that like relative to what our subscription costs are for, for Microsoft, so.
That's, I think the Microsoft costs are coming out of it right now. We need to move that around.
We either need to move it around or we could also look at reducing those. So we're coming up on, I guess that was April-ish of this? No, it was probably later.
It was April.
Was it April? So...
And those are annual.
Those are annual and you can walk them, you can walk the accesses back to the next step down, which is just the web-based one. And it's cheaper than, than what, the twenty-four, twenty-five dollars a month for the, the full, full subscriptions. So we should have a conversation about who's using what features and whether or not we're comfortable walking them, walking them back. That could be a significant savings.
Will you remember to take us through that at some point?
Well, I think it'll come up a little bit. We're planning on having a conver, Kari, Teagan and I are planning on having a preliminary conversation relative to the office staffing work and organization work that Kari and Teagan have been working on. And I think that will feed pretty naturally into a conversation about what resources should be available for, for whom. And then like, and then also who has access to what shared resources. So before we finish like rolling out a shared resource thing, we have a better idea of, of what subscription levels everybody needs. And then we can bring that back to, to RB and just tell them the next time we are up for subscriptions, we'd like to roll them back.
Okay.
Just gonna put a little plug and say thanks for the Adobe account. It's been very helpful and I missed it in a number of different ways and I'm very happy to have.
You're welcome. From all of us. Let's see, where, what else here? Most of these, Teagan developed. Under postage, I cannot for the life of me why I said to reduce that from three thousand to six hundred. Sandra says I did on October twenty-fourth, but I don't remember why and I'll have to ask her why that made sense to me at the time. It might have been something she recommended and I said, sure, that sounds good, but I can't think why.
Well, it looks like the actual was five hundred out of a three thousand dollar budget.
The year before.
The year before.
But now I'm looking at this year out of the three thousand by Oc, how did we do this? By Oc, to the end of October, we had spent forty-seven percent of that three thousand.
Well, I think maybe Wendy's stamps go up?
July.
Yeah, but what?
Barbara went right before and spent like a boatload of money on stamps.
So that was money for stamps?
I guess some of it. I'm not sure. I'd have to look at line-by-line expense reports again of the postage for this year. I didn't have, I had the last couple of years I didn't have this year.
So they're all sitting in the vault waiting for us to use them, you mean?
Yeah. She keeps them in the vault because she got some money.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, all right.
Do we not have like a meter, like a meter to count, like through?
It would be cheaper not to call my office to close, but having a, a Pitney Bow Meter saves you.
That you can snuff, yeah, you and I can talk about that.
Pennies to, you know, but I mean, you send out hundreds or thousands of letters, it's, yeah.
And also time. I mean, you just print out. I mean, do we do it?
You have to lick all those stamps?
No, well, you, you buy, you buy the rolls, so you, it's like a printed roll and you buy a printer and you, you purchase it through the software. So if you wanted to buy a bunch in advance, you, you could, you could do that. You just print them out. You'd do the same thing, but you save the time of having to drive down to the post office and...
Sure, sure, no, I'm, I'm not...
And the whole, and the whole bit. And I, yeah, I think, yeah, there must be negotiated pricing, I guess, right?
Meters are cheaper for businesses, yeah, like fifty, sixty cents versus sixty-six or something.
I'll, I'll come back to you sometime and we'll, we'll work out before Barbara buys more stamps.
So that must be what I did. I looked at last year's and said, heck, put it at six hundred.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's not, maybe because she bought a bunch this year, we won't have to buy as much.
Yeah. What do you guys think? Would you be comfortable knocking it down to that?
I mean, worst case scenario is we just blow through our posted budget, so, you know.
I think it's okay.
I think.
Yeah, and we have it, we have three thousand in the elections postage, so.
Right.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, unless we...
No, I mean, it's not gonna be used for that, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, let's leave it at six hundred then. Supplies, office equipment, these are the best guesses.
When you and I looked at our past receipts of all those things today, there was nothing frivolous or...
I don't know, I thought that wastebasket was pretty extravagant.
That was for me, that was...
Maybe we just don't burn things in the parking lot?
When Andy's been very good, I let him burn things in the parking lot.
Okay. Moving along. Anybody see anything there? You okay with buying an AC unit for five hundred bucks so that our office staff can work comfortably in the summer?
And the server can stay as cool as it needs to be.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, it was for the server, I, you're right.
Barbara and I both were, spent plenty of time in the South. We can handle some heat, but archival records and servers don't appreciate the heat the same extent.
Well, now that we've hired a Callis guy to hang out in the office, I don't know. I don't know that he can handle the heat. Okay, anything, anybody wanna comment on that piece at all? Payroll and taxes, I don't think there's a darn thing we can do about any of that. It is what it is. The best we can do is reduce the staff. Okay. I had a talk with, I'm now on zoning, unless anybody, did I run over anybody wanting to comment on anything? Nope, okay. To talk with John McCullough today, you remember, I'm not sure where, I asked him where that increase in his salary came from and he said, I don't know, I don't want it, level fund me.
Well, they were, was it Jan was...
It was Jan.
Advocating for it very strongly.
Yeah. John said he doesn't care, he's fine with level funding. And he said it's fine to drop his expenses down to about four hundred. He said all he needs to buy, I forget, he threw some terms out, stakes to put his peas on when he stakes out places. So I was thinking, well, why don't we give him five thousand for his stipend this year and drop zoning expenses down to four hundred? Okay. Kari, you got all of that?
I do.
So that actually gives us a decrease, a little bit of a decrease in that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What, what's the big decrease in the assistant zoning?
That was Jan. She said that she just really didn't do that much. She didn't think she was worth it.
And she doesn't turn in hours to get paid now anyway.
Fair enough.
I did wanna have a quick conversation about police. You'll remember that when we took office, we got twice as many hours of police time for the amount that was budgeted and then they doubled their salaries on us, so we're now getting half the police time that we've always gotten. It's been proposed at level funded here. I think we're getting away with half the police time. What do you guys have a thought about this?
What do they do?
Well, and it's complicated because so much of what they do ends up being meaningless. So, you know, they go and they pull over speeders and the sign is tilted two degrees too far southwest. You know what I mean? The person gets off and judges expect them to knock tickets down. I think Eastmont Pillar is pretty aggressive.
Traffic tickets mostly is what they do.
Yeah, with their patrols, so Eastmont Pillar does pretty good.
But we could also call them if somebody was robbing the general store, right? Do we pay for that or is that state police? I guess that's...
We would be calling the state police and they would say, we're very sorry, but we're understaffed right now, so unless someone's been shot, we probably can't come out. So, no, it, I call them when there's firearms and they don't come out unless someone's been shot.
Okay, so it's mostly traffic stuff?
It's mostly traffic stops and really they said themselves their, their hands are very tied as far as, you know, they could pull someone over for something egregious and the judge is gonna want them to knock it down, knock it, tell, you know, it's basically meaningless, so.
I think mostly what we do is...
But I mean, that's not a reason that they just don't pull people over.
Oh, no, they do pull people over. If they come out, they do.
If there's a spot where people are behaving badly and we put a, a cop out there for a week and then, and they give out a few tickets, that usually slows the traffic down for a while. That's, that's, as far as I can tell, is the main thing we use them for.
Like Maple Corner, right there on County Road. I know in our village, people can go through there sixty, seventy miles an hour, it's lovely.
Yeah, and they've, they've been on Pekin, Pekin Brook too, a couple of times. I've run into them over there as well. But, you know, I think there's been a lot of conversation, obviously, over the last year about, about speeding. And, you know, I think if we're gonna do it the way that you're supposed to do it and make adjustments and that sort of thing, there's limited conversation to be having around there, but the bigger issue is, is paying for the time for these guys to be around in a very targeted fashion. And so, you know, I, I, this particular year, it seems hard to find more money to increase that. But I think if the town wants to have an honest conversation about changing the behavior of people's driving, then it's gonna come to funding more constable time.
Yeah.
Or, or more sheriff's time.
Well, and hopefully through the next year too, we can get our signs, you know, especially on the back roads. They're really particularly restricted back there, you know, because our signs, so many of them aren't whatever is the current.
You mean the flashing signs that say...
No, no, the sign, that the speed limit sign has to be a certain size and it has to be at a certain distance from the road and it has to be at a certain height. And if it's not exact, then I'm writing a ticket for the person going seventy down Pekin Brook is thrown out.
They can still write them tickets for careless or reckless driving.
That is true.
I mean, they can, they can find ways to make it a meaningful exchange.
But I'm hearing that we're not gonna make any changes then to...
How many, how much time is that actually?
Oh, boy.
It was like an hour a week.
Roughly an hour and a half?
Yeah. Because they, they were no longer getting the contracts for the state. There was something that had shifted, so they basically had to fund themselves through doing the patrols. Like they were able to offset their costs by whatever gig they previously used to have. So it, it went up a lot. Yeah, and it averaged out, because it used to be what, like eight hours a week or something? But it ended up being like an hour and a half or four hours.
No, I think it was half the amount because they doubled the sal, they were charging us thirty dollars an hour for their services. And then they came to us after the budget had passed and said, oh, but we're gonna double, double our costs, uh, double your costs. And they started charging us sixty dollars an hour. So we said, okay, then we'll take half the amount of time. So, there we are. All right, sounds like we're gonna continue that for another half. Animal control is level funded. Cole says that's okay with him. Everybody okay with that? Planning Commission, I did not call Jan, but maybe we should have a quick conversation about that interactive map.
So this is one of the items we adjusted based on last week's guidance, by three thousand, two, three thousand, saying we'll fund the purchase, whether that happens this year or next.
So, yes, yeah.
And then three thousand is for ongoing subscription.
That's right, okay. Do you guys wanna see the demo? Do you want me to try to schedule that for the next meeting or can we wait till the new year?
I'm, I'm happy waiting till the new year. I, I would like to schedule a demo. I'd like to take a better look, take a better look at it for sure.
Just to see it, but we'll purchase it without waiting for the demo is what I'm asking.
I'm just hoping it says razzle-dazzle as promised.
Well, yeah, and I think it'd be worth probably bringing in the Webmaster as well for, for that. I vaguely remember buying a GIS subscription this year
She's pretty savvy with that.
to help facilitate some work during the disaster recovery. And it sounds like, at the very least, we would wanna move this stuff over into this resource and maybe either like make sure that we're heavily supplementing the GIS subscription or we might just be able to replace it entirely.
Because part of the GIS is promised that like Conservation Commission can use it for some of their stuff, or roads can use it for some of their stuff. So we are doing it at a different mapping system. We should back off on that one.
Okay, so, let's see, their expenses went up and they want to, twenty-five hundred dollars for their reserve fund. You guys okay with that?
Do we have what, what their current fund level is at?
That's, that's the, the column just before.
That was the budget.
Yeah, five thousand this year.
Is that what, is that what you were asking? The, the third column is by this year's budget?
That reserve fund is for expenses related to incre, uh, revising the town plan, right? And they're planning on getting into that this year. And so I guess my question is whether or not they have built up a balance
Oh.
sufficient to make a go for that, that revision.
Well, yeah, Jen was saying it had been underfunded and so she wanted us to,
Yeah.
to give it more this year. I'm trying. That's funny, I don't see it here. I got Conservation Commission reappraising. Huh. I don't see it in the special funds. Am I looking right at it and not? Curtis Pond Equipment Town Hall. That's odd. Why, I don't know why it isn't showing up in our list of special funds.
So they didn't get it this year?
Yeah, they got eight thousand. Uh, no, wait, am I looking at the right line?
Five thousand.
Five thousand, yeah. So she's asking for half that this year. So the increase is coming pretty much entirely from the interactive map.
Mapping, yeah.
I don't know.
That's a question for Sandra. Where the heck is the Planning Commission Reserve Fund?
Okay.
I'm really curious about that.
Reappraisal fund?
No, that'd be listers. Their reserve fund.
I, I believe we briefly touched on it. Couple of meetings ago, but yeah, I still don't know. That's okay. I'm, I'm fine with it as it is.
Yeah, okay. Everybody else okay with that? Yep. Jamie, I can't see you, but I assume you'll let us know if you're not. Emergency man- Emergency management. Nick asked for five hundred dollars to buy perishable food. The stipend was something that somebody suggested and he said, well, you can do it, but I won't take it this year. Although if we get another one, another emergency management person, they might take it. So, um, we could zero that one out if we needed to. You guys wanna buy five hundred dollars of canned goods for our emergency shelters?
Well, I think they're looking at the long-term, the long-term foods that you can have in storage for a long time that.
The MREs or whatever.
That then if they, you know, got to a point where we did not have any urgency and did not need them, then they could be donated back within, to the community via the Food Health. But it would be good to have small amounts of things on hand for our shelters if we needed to deploy them because it can be hard in a crisis situation and to go rob the Calis store, you know, East Calis store. It's, you know, if you have no means to get out of the community, it's good to have something, you know, maybe we can do with less than five hundred. But, and there may be funding streams somewhere, but it's a good idea to have it.
Other thoughts on that?
I have mixed feelings. I, in some ways, I feel like with three stores in town, having a closet full of, what, crackers and canned soup.
Yeah, it wouldn't be crackers and canned soup, but yeah.
No, I just, I guess some stuff would make sense. They would just need to be managed.
Yeah, where, where is it gonna be stored, I guess, is the?
Right.
How often is it used?
So we had, we had the shelter open last year at the elementary school. And I don't know if they tapped into it. They had it. I think the Red Cross brought food that time.
I thought the local people all, I, I wasn't here. That was at Christmas and I was away. But I heard that people just made stuff and brought it in.
If the Red Cross runs it, you have to use Red Cross stuff. You can't use outside things. So that's, it's a cost, but, you know, they do all the work and take care of things that you can't use your stuff.
Including stuff that we bought?
What if we?
I'm not entirely sure of the specifics. I just know Betty Copeland told me a little bit about this when it happened.
What if we funded like, uh, it, like an emergency town account for the stores? Now that we have like the East Calis store.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And then we had, and we have Maple Corner. I mean, then the only other shelter that we're talking about that we would have a reserve stock would be here. And then you're dealing with like inventory management and that sort of thing. But if we have, I mean, we, we had this kind of discussion with Nick when we were doing flood recovery stuff. You know, we deputized him with a certain amount of money that he could spend, you know, to, I, I think it's, it was part of, I don't know, was, what was that part of? He, he could spend like thirty-five hundred dollars or something like that. But it seems to me like if we had a, if we split that five hundred dollars between the two stores.
Three.
Three. Oh, right, in the admin co-op. So if we split those between the tabs at the stores that could be used in an emergency, then we don't have to. It's not like a recurring. It's a, it only gets used if it's needed. And then we also don't have to do the inventory management and rollover part as well.
I would, I would suggest that they explore that and not tell them to do that.
Yeah.
Well, no, I mean, it's definitely, it's just considerably less cost effective. I don't know your prices, but our prices locally are really high. So, um, but I think the likelihood, I don't know, it seems like we're having more and more events. But as of now, we haven't had an event where, the one event that we had, those of us in the other parts of town, we do. And then, you know, they had the Red Cross was providing food up at the, the school.
Don't forget the fact that we've got a lot of new generators. We had a lot of places that didn't have generators. So it didn't matter if you came here or there, it was the same as at your house. Whereas now we have a lot of places that have generators so that they are more.
Yeah, so we've got the Maple Corner Community Center, we've got here, and we've got the school that all have generators and can be used as emergency shelters and all have, you know, sort of kitchen facilities.
Right.
Where we could feed people. But what happened at Christmas, I understand, is several people came to get warm and get a meal and then went home. I gather nobody spent the night.
Oh, no, we, at the school.
Oh, yeah, people did spend the night?
Oh, my friend spent the night with his, he spent Christmas Eve with his two little girls and his Asian father at the old memories.
Oh, okay, I'm misinforming them.
Yeah, no, because a lot of times in, in these situations, because people don't wanna be away from their pets. So most shelters don't have places for pets. So people will go to get warm, maybe get something to eat, and then go back to their cold house.
Well, I don't think they had a lot of sleeping, like it wasn't the most comfortable sleeping accommodations at the school either. Like I know my friend said his dad was on the nurse's office cot and that was the nicest bed I've ever had. So I don't know if that's a long-term thing to think about.
Well, no, with the deploying of cots and those things, yeah, there was just, no one could get anywhere from anywhere. So I think that was a lot of it.
Maybe we should be investing then in mattresses instead of food, if, if the Red Cross is gonna bring food. Anyway, what do we wanna do with this section, folks? We wanna, it sounds like maybe we wanna give Nick a little budget.
Yeah, I think it's reasonable.
But, but not tell him it has to be bought for food. It's.
I, yeah, I'd be, I'd be comfortable funding the five hundred dollars, but I, I think we should have another cover. Let's, let's flag it for a conversation. I think there might be a more efficient way to, to apply, even if it's an agreement with each of the stores to, you know, buy things that cost. Or he can even dictate what the things are that they wanna carry in inventory, but then they can sell it after a certain amount of time. But at least, at least it's just money that's sitting in a reserve account, you know, that, that is easily accessed. And then we don't.
Out of five gallon bucket of dried pinto.
Yeah, that we have to then, you know, that we have, that we then have to refund, you know? Like if we're not, if we're not using it, if it doesn't end up getting used.
Sell this some nice permission.
Kari, you got that one? Okay.
We're sticking with the amount that we're gonna make the suggestion about before we leave the stores.
Yeah, okay. What do you wanna do about the stipend, guys? You wanna zero that out?
You said it won't take it, but I, I think that another person, if they were to do it, something came up where, I mean, it's, it can be a tremendous amount of work. I think, you know, it's a pretty token amount for the amount of work that goes into it and probably should be there.
So you'd leave the thousand in?
Knowing that he's not gonna take it, but yeah, probably.
About five hundred?
It's like seventy-five percent of the stipend for the select board. My cost benefit analysis.
How much work does he actually do?
This summer, he did an insane amount of work, but it's a fair amount of, um, you know, there's monthly meetings and updating of the, he's gotta be pretty on top of the emergency plan.
How often does that change?
This year, there's a big change. I don't think that it changes very frequently. That, the other part is that he ends up being, I think, the primary point of contact from the state when things.
Like roads are closed?
Yeah, uh, not necessarily when roads are closed, but when there's a, when there's a disaster. Uh, he ends up be, being one of the kinda key coordinators with the state's emergency response team. Um, and kinda offloads or off, uh, offsets the, the select board engagement at that level. So it, I, it depends, you know? I, I would imagine that like the administrative load is, is gonna not be as intense because he's done a lot of organizational work. But there's always the potential that there's a fair amount of hours that are gonna be put in.
Yeah, so, but what you're describing doesn't sound to me like any more than the Planning Commission or the Conservation Commission. They meet once a month and they do an enormous amount of work.
Yeah. I mean, I think if we wanna pull it out for now and Nick is good for going on for another year, then, uh, then we say great.
Yeah, I mean, it's not that I'm against paying them. It's just that how can you, why would we decide to pay him and not pay the others who are doing the same kind of work?
Well, it's a, it's like the constable or it's a, it's a higher burden. I mean, the Planning Commission doesn't have, I mean, the Planning Commission, it's an arduous and challenging job, but there's a lot of, the decisions you make as the emergency coordinator. You know? Yeah, I, I need to be good, I don't know if they're bad. I mean, it's a lot, it's, it's a lot to be holding in an emergency. But, but he said he was gonna take it, so I'm okay for this budget if he wanted it.
Oh, would.
I'd, I'd say, I'd say we pull it out and we put a permanent asterisk in there. Um, as soon as Nick's away from the, you know, ready to step, step away forward or transition away from it, then we can add it back in.
Well, or let's see what, what we, what the bottom line is. We might even decide to add it back in this year. Okay, Kari, if you wanna take it out for now? We'll leave in the five hundred, okay. How are we doing? Quarter to eight. I guess we can do a few more. Conservation Commission, so.
That's the vacuum cleaner.
I found it the other day hung up in this chair right here.
Yeah, sometimes they hide it like that. Down the stairs, if you ever see it, like that parking back in the kitchen door.
Oh, I put it over there. I thought that's where it was supposed to be.
She said there's a docking thing.
Oh, oh, okay.
Okay, so with the Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
They haven't had one and I think they just, I, I'd gone to their meeting and they just kinda, someone takes notes like most of the groups do.
You're talking about the secretary?
Yes.
Right. Do other commissions have paid recording secretaries?
There was a paid one for the DRB. We took that out. That's the only one I can think of.
And I don't think the Conservation Commission is having one in the long term.
Yeah, I think we can safely zero that out, yeah. Uh, two hundred dollars in training. I don't know if they've been, doesn't look like they've been using it. There's no actual there. It's zero.
If it's in, um, for training, they, they can't, you can't apply it to other expenses. It has to be used for training, right? It has to be coded as training.
Oh, you mean, do they, well, they'd have to get our permission to use it for something else. Um, and we are giving them six hun- well, we do have six hundred dollars for equipment. Uh, and two hundred and fifty for other expenses. Uh, what about the greenup? Jamie, doesn't the state pay for greenup?
Yeah, I have no idea why greenup got put in there. We get a grant from the state that covers any expenses.
And the Conservation Commission doesn't do it. You do it, right?
Exactly.
Okay, so we'll zero that one out.
There is nothing.
There is nothing there, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But with the conservation fund, what is that used for? That to go?
That's, that's the main thing they do is, um, that's what they were formed for, to use that money to purchase land or development rights on land in some cases.
I think they were largely formed because it's a statutory requirement relative to having a town plan, isn't it?
Oh, I'm not sure about that because I remember there was a fight over whether or not to form it. And I know because my husband led it.
I see.
Um, and we didn't have to at the time, certainly. And I think they got two thousand dollars or something. And the point was to be able to conserve land. But if you look at their statutory authority, that's their main function is to, um.
I see.
And so do they go out yearly? I mean, do they have funds? Are they spending this amount every year on?
No, it, it's a ma- it's, it's.
I mean, Calis is so concerned.
No, it's a, it's a fund that gets, um, that gets, you know, funded annually and, and, you know, amasses a value. Um, and then when there's opportunity for, uh, buying land or, um, buying development rights or something like that, or offsetting development rights that can be used for, it can be used for that. So it, it's a, it's a rolling balance. And then when a project manifests itself that would be worthy of, you know, expending the funds, then they.
So it's basically like what the land trust would do or one of those outfits?
It's very.
They usually partner with, with the land, land trust and other organizations that do that kinda thing. So it's, it's, you know, when they do it, they need like twenty thousand dollars. So they try to build it up slowly so that when an opportunity comes along, they can jump on it.
Okay.
Uh, and I, just looking at their report from last year, they were involved in establishing the shade tree preservation law in town ordinance, I guess.
Hmm, I don't think it's an ordinance.
It is an ordinance, shade tree.
Yeah, and which was eventually the Calis Tree Ordinance.
Is it an ordinance or is it a policy?
I don't know. They call it an ordinance here. They were involved in helping us with the subdivision review. They gave us a little training in that, some tree planting. They did a fall foliage walk. They helped a lot with the shoreline zoning. They developed a curb cut ordinance that got rejected. And they're working on surveying the list town forests. So they've expanded beyond what their statutory authority is, which is fine. There's nothing to prevent them from doing that.
Right now, a lot of what they're doing is invasives.
And that's right, they don't even mention it, yeah.
For the things that they've really been focusing on. I mean, they've worked for properties. Um, and they still would like to be thinking that that's, they talk about managing town forests and invasives.
But has there, but have any, have any, has any of that work come out of the conservation fund or been funded out of that?
No.
No.
Right.
No, the conservation fund is only for the, the land conservation projects.
And one time for the moral.
And the.
Oh, that's right. They did, that was unusual, yeah.
There's thirty-nine thousand in the fund right now.
Oh, yes, thank you, okay.
Thank you. So they do have resources in it?
Yes, but that's not gonna buy them much when it comes to land. If they have to, if, if a project comes up, they've got what they've got and that's what they have to use to jump on it.
Given, given the type of year that, uh, that we're having and, uh, needing to find places to save money and the pressures of other issues in town, um, I would, I would say keeping that, keeping that flat at five thousand. I mean, I have a, I have a hard time justifying a discretionary increase in funding of that budget to eight thousand dollars if we're not, if we're not adding a discretionary increase to the Planning Commission Reserve Fund, which has been decreased from five thousand to twenty-five hundred. I mean, I think there's a lot of, there's a, a lot of programs that need to be funded around town that take a closer look at how conservation and development and all of these things play into each other. And, and I, I appreciate the presentation, uh, that, that Larry gave, but it definitely sounded like the, the increase to eight, eight thousand was, was a discretionary request for this year. And I appreciate it, but I just don't think that this is the year probably to be throwing an extra three thousand dollars in there.
I agree with that.
I agree.
Okay.
I mean, I do think the equipment that they had looked at is something that they can use and need. And I think having them over is gonna help a lot, being able to help with some of the roadside invasives in a timely manner.
Okay, so we're taking out the six hundred for secretary. We're knocking the eight thousand to five thousand. What about the lakes and ponds newsletter? Now, I know, I noticed again, I suggested dropping it. You remember we had a conversation about that. Larry's vision was we were gonna print these things and mail them to every resident.
And then collect them from the recycling bin at the post office and send them out to more people.
No. All the people, all the old people wanted the hard copy and all the young people wanted the email version, that's how.
But maybe it could be that if people wanted it, or there could be a certain, I don't. But maybe it could be that if people wanted it, or there could be a certain, I don't know.
Well, that's what we talked about. We talked about printing it, putting a few copies around town for those who want.
Because it doesn't conserve me to kill a lot of trees and have just paper get thrown out.
So I had just dropped a five hundred out of it, but maybe I just made that number up. They asked for for fifteen hundred.
I think in particular, I want to make sure they mail them to people who have waterfront property sensitive like.
That's right, yeah.
To be saving those properties in safe, sustainable ways.
So is it primarily for postage or also for like the printing? Do they go to a special printer?
It's glossy in colors.
Okay, schmancy, schmancy. All right.
They had a grant to do it several years ago. You remember, he passed around samples. And it was very attractive, but.
Kind of think another grant they can do whatever they want.
Oh, I guess we know how Teagan feels.
I like the mailing. I love like you can ask in. I throw away like eggs and stuff, but I like all the mailing.
Okay, what do you want to do, guys? Anybody have an opinion?
I mean, I think it's nice. They, you know, the people who appreciate them really appreciate them. I think we should. Leave it at either seven fifty or a thousand and let them decide the best way to spend it, whether it's printing and having them available at tech stores. Or mailing to pond front properties only.
And putting it online, probably combination.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, pick a number, somebody. Uh, Jamie, you mentioned seven fifty.
I think seven fifty is doable.
I'm okay with seven fifty.
I think they should be able to create a print even if it's glossy and schmancy looking.
Doesn't give them much postage.
Where they send them out once a month or once a year?
No, just one, once a year.
I think they just do one for the year.
Yeah.
They used to do two a year.
Okay, good. Should we move on? We do the swim committee? Mark Mark has um managed to get the dock price down by, what, a couple hundred dollars because he talked them, he he found out that we don't have to pay the taxes. As a municipality. It's not even a couple. It's about two hundred dollars, I think.
Yes, two forty thousand. So I may have misunderstood, but I thought that the discussion last week was we agreed to reduce the. The dock number to twenty five hundred. It was five thousand previously. Cause I remember the discussion being around, well, let's ask them to fundraise the balance, but yeah, I didn't remember it that way.
Yeah, that was me. I was pushing for, well, because it's something that there are, whether businesses or people of means. That it seems like someone in the vicinity. Might be willing to. Purchase it. Or sponsor it.
Right, donate.
Donate.
Maybe. We've been asking for a lot of donations lately for that. We've been raising money for the dam. We've been raising money. We raised money for the raft. And I'm feeling like this dock, it's a really important community resource.
Yeah, I guess that was my my impression from the presentation that that. As much as I'd like to find like another way to do it more cheaply is that it it sounds like the current state of the dock is like. A the safety issue for running the program from it, right? And so like the program is already suffering from a. An existential issue of being able to find somebody to uh to actually run it. Um, and then you have a secondary existential. Problem of like having a dock that is in need of replacement and um if it has to be pulled out or can't go back in next year, then. That makes it even more challenging to run a program and so.
I appreciate it needs to be refurbished, but. The town is, as we learned with the interest for the bond that everyone voted to, it's close to seven hundred thousand. And Curtis Pond. As much as we like to talk that it's a resource for the whole town, it's primarily a resource for the people that live in the area, so.
I don't know. My kids learn to swim there.
Yeah, but it's the only swim lessons around.
Yeah.
But it doesn't have an instructor?
Well, they have. They've been having a hard time finding certified kids.
I think this year they were like bare, they were barely able to get one in at like in time.
They didn't, but that's because they didn't have a committee.
Oh, I see.
Nobody had appointed the committee.
I got.
So nobody was working on it. This year's committee started working on it and they've not yet found an instructor.
And the trainings happen like January or February, so if you don't have a person in February, there are one. So it's a tricky needle to thread.
And that's the the dock's primary uses for the lessons?
It's a lot of it, yeah.
I I mean, I think it's a it's a community access to it. It goes in right by the um. By the kind of park area, the parking area there.
It does. You can get in by steps. It's just the dock makes the swimming lessons and it's more fun. You can jump off.
So it's by the swim area?
By the swim area. It's fun. There's just those little steps you can go in.
Yeah, the steps that we just put the railing.
Because we just put the cute little railing on.
Yeah, so it's five thousand dollars. And and you're inclu- you're inclined to ask them to raise the entire amount?
I just. Think there are. I think it might a business or someone, there might be a means to get it sponsored. It's just we're already like every individual is already putting in with the bond and we did the railing with the last.
Yeah, that happened.
Thing and I I. You know, just being from the other side of town, it's not, people on my side of town don't. Don't get to use it. There's not parking. There's not, you know, so. Everyone goes to number ten, but.
I would agree with that. Well, why don't we leave it at twenty five hundred and they can choose to fundraise for the balance of it or carry it over for a replacement. In the next year. Um, you know, I I would agree with. One of the things that struck me about the the staircase situation is there was being used, the rationale was, you know, accessibility, et cetera, et cetera, to the ponds. It's like there. Are other swimming areas. So why don't we look at a proposal for each of the swimming areas and consider equitability? Um, and. Nobody seemed to bring anything up at the time, you know. I don't know why number ten doesn't get more uh more attention or have a dock or a raft or something like that, considering how many people. Use number ten. Um, and, you know, maybe this is an opportunity to see. Twenty five hundred there and another conversation we had next year about having another other infrastructure being placed at the other swimming areas.
Now, we still have with Curtis Pond, the road crew is still gonna be putting in that floating. The swimming raft thing, yes? Did that ever get put in this summer? I don't think it did.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
I thought it did, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know. I mean, Mark has um got the dock. He's ready to go buy it, but um if if we don't give him the money, he can't.
But he wouldn't be getting the money until. Yeah.
Uh, well, yes, but he could enter the contract if he knew that he had the money. So personally, I'm inclined to give them the money. I do think it's an important community resource, and I do believe a lot of people from East Callis go over there, but. Maybe not.
I would say.
Okay.
That's where I would lean to, I think.
And Jamie has li- oh, go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say I I tend to, I I really do see both sides on this one. Um, I I see that. Curtis has gotten a lot of attention recently. Um, and. But I also do think that, you know, if you looked at the statistics of kids who do this, have gone through the swim lessons over the last. Twenty, thirty years, it's really kids from all over town. Um, and. Spending a lot of time at the swim area, it's really a wide range of people who swim there. And I think that the dock. Makes the swim area safer um and more appealing and yeah, I I support the full five, although I. Fully understand the hesitancy.
I will say there weren't lessons this year, and I think we went swimming there. Once, maybe twice. And I know the weather sucked over the summer, but we definitely went to number ten a number of times, and we didn't go to Curtis. And part of that was because there are no swim lessons. And part of the reason, you know, it's a. It's a lot to do.
So there's sort of parks. It's very limited parking, so if you don't walk to it or live there, you know, the parking's very restrictive and so it's.
During swim lesson time, it's usually okay. It's just later in the day when it warms up. Cause during swim lesson time, it's shaky there and it's very cold.
All right. I have an alternative pro- proposal. It's ten thousand dollars, but it has to go in, or it's five thousand dollars, but it has to go into number ten.
What do you?
I'd still say no.
Well, at number ten, no one would want to because they think they like, you know, I mean, I take.
Number ten's great.
Okay, so it sounds like we've got two who wanna pay the five thousand, one who wants to split the difference and two who don't wanna do it. Have I got that right?
I'd be okay with leaving half and then let's see where we cut. We can go back. Let's see where we can squeeze everybody else. I mean, I want to squeeze everyone fairly.
Okay, so now we've got two.
Would you be okay with that?
I'm fine moving forward. I I think that's definitely a place we could go back to.
No, are you okay with leaving twenty five hundred in there? In that line item?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's what we've, that's the sense then that we've got at this point. Okay, everybody? Twenty five hundred. Thank you. Um, are you guys okay to keep going? This is an unusual meeting. We're gonna, we can go back, come back to it next week.
Well, this is Donna. He's been up since midnight yesterday. He's driving me home and I want him to not go off. We do not have guardrails.
You know what? What I'd like to suggest, let's finish the general budget. We're pretty close to the end and not going to highway.
All right.
Okay. Okay, that takes us to town hall. Um. Let me see here. What can we say about that?
Didn't John say we cut picture frames?
Yes, I've mentioned, oh, moving the generator. I will tell you that I had a conversation with with John McCullough on the design advisory board. You know, the design advisory board wants the generator moved. Okay.
It was a lot to put in there. It's a lot of work and expensive to move.
Well, not only that, they don't have regulatory authority. They're advisory only, but that's what they won't.
Oh, so we were, it wasn't even like a requirement that we had to?
They they don't have that authority.
Okay.
They will if we pass the zoning as as it is now. It the zoning will be changed to give them that authority, but currently they don't have it and they can't. So it's an advice to us, and it's up to us to whether or not we wanna do it. I discussed it with John, who's on the design advisory board, and we both agreed that it made sense to just ignore it for now and maybe do it in a year or so.
Okay.
The the moving the generator would cost, I think it was about twenty five hundred dollars. So and meanwhile, maybe maybe they'll build a cute little fence around it and everybody will be okay with it.
Privacy screen, they're they're.
Well, John said it's a, it becomes a um traffic hazard if they do that. I don't know. So if you you're all right with it, we'll just put that one aside.
It becomes a guardrail, which we need on the side of the roof.
Yes, you notice we don't have anything for acoustic improvements in here, and we do have something for picture frames. Um, so John and I discussed the picture frames. John's got a bunch of maps. He says, ah, zero that one out. I can buy some frames at a secondhand at an auction or something. We'll be fine.
Did you say garage sale?
Gar- yeah, I did. You're right, at a garage sale. And even if we don't frame them, we can put them up like that, and they'll still help with the acoustics.
My eyesight's not that good right now.
And in terms of acoustic improvements, I mean, I would love to buy the ceiling, but I don't think we're gonna do it this year. Do you guys wanna put something in there for acoustic improvements for this year, or do you wanna put that one off?
It suggested it was more chairs, I thought.
He said, no, what he said was putting the chairs here had made the biggest difference.
Yeah.
Bringing these down instead of just all the wooden ones. And he's gonna work, uh, he and Toby are working at screwing the floor down. Apparently, I don't know. It doesn't bother me, so I don't, I I'm not a a person who can judge this.
Same.
Well, and I think this with the things that they've done with hanging things in the chairs and they've made a difference. Yeah, already.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to do some more, but I'm not sure this is the year.
I I think that's fair.
I agree. Being on Zoom, I can attest to it's still being pretty echoey in there. But I think there is more incremental progress that can be made for your achievement that we can leave it blank.
So shall we take out the three hundred dollar picture frames then?
Yeah.
Per John's suggestion. Uh, town hall reserve fund. Do we wanna put ten thousand dollars in that?
How much do they have in it now?
Five hundred dollars.
Oh, that's what they're doing.
Five hundred?
Now.
So the audit says they wouldn't include this year's ten thousand that was budgeted.
If you can, someone can refresh me because I can't remember the friends of the town hall when they make money from. Programs and plays and things that happen here. Is that, does any of that come back?
Yes, but not until we use the reserve fund to.
They have to make much money this year.
Yeah, because it's too cold. We have to insulate, and the reserve fund is being built up to toward fixing those things. So we can only use it in the summer right now.
Now, is this one of the buildings that Scott had applied to do the energy audit on? So they might come in and do some insulating?
No.
Okay.
Uh, they might. We might be able to get some grant money for it. I'm not sure.
So the ten thousand would go to. What?
Fifty five hundred.
Oh, no, but what are they?
Just gonna be the guy that keeps coming in and cutting things out.
What does it go towards?
I was gonna say six. Keep it the same.
But Ian's asking, what is it going to be spent on?
Yes.
And Winchester and I didn't have the interest today that is a friend of the town hall.
Yeah, oh, I'm saying it it'll probably be spent on things like insulation and and, you know, other projects to to fix up the town hall. So it's sort of a chicken and egg thing. Until they fix up the upstairs, they're not gonna get much income. They'll get it in the summer, maybe.
I may be bringing it back down to the six thousand.
Okay, six.
That's enough to do something.
Jamie, okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Insurance, I don't think we can do anything about that. Long term debt, I think that is what it is. Tax abatement. Why do we need money for tax abatement? Is that to replace what taxes are abated?
I don't know.
It must be. It must be to make make up when we tell somebody that they don't have to pay as much as they were assessed.
And that only ends up being five hundred dollars a year?
Oh, it's like it was.
I would just show my houseies bird down there.
Twenty one hundred.
It's gonna go down a lot. It's gonna be pretty hard.
Actual for FY twenty twenty three was.
Twenty one, twenty one.
Twenty one, yeah.
Well, we'll say no one at this point has requested an abatement since I've been in office, so.
We had one, but I guess she withdrew.
When was that?
Uh, yeah, well, it was uh they it it didn't end up being an abatement. I think it was just a correction because there were two different parcels that needed to be adjusted.
Yeah, there was that. There was somebody over on um Worcester Road. Anyway.
Anything about Jamie Johnson or?
She the one, she inherited it and she couldn't afford to pay the taxes on it and.
Is that something we should be discussing in open meeting?
Uh, yeah.
It's not that.
Good point. Uh, in any case, uh, should we just leave it at five hundred then? And then if Sandra wants to tell us, maybe we can, that's a question for Sandra. Is there some reason why?
Yeah, I mean, it looks like it wasn't. It wasn't. Yeah, I mean, it looks like it wasn't, it wasn't budgeted for and, uh, and then we had the $2,100 in expense and then maybe Sandra's recommending that we just put something in there to cover or whatever expense may come up. But it seemed, seems reasonable to put $500 in there.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Um, there's a Woodbury Fire Department meeting tomorrow night. Uh, anybody planning to go?
I was gonna go.
You're gonna go?
If the roads are good. I don't have, yeah, great tires, so if I can scoot down 14, I can.
Okay.
I was trying to figure out what the Eastmont Piliar meeting was.
14th.
It's on the 14th and they've sent us some documents. So.
Tomorrow, Woodbury.
Woodbury.
I'm gonna put on the next agenda that we need to talk about the inter-local agreement.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I probably will sleep tomorrow.
So will all of you please look over that inter-local agreement because it's time to renew it? And we need to fig, we're gonna have to negotiate with them, okay, at the next meeting. And we'll talk about it at the next meeting.
So are we all going to the one on the 14th then?
Usually we all go. It's the big one. It's the one where they do the budget.
Okay.
And the Eastmont Piliar people all go. And so, yeah.
I think it's been a pretty long-standing.
Um, I mean, if you can't, you can't. It's on a Thursday night and Jamie won't be able to go, but it would be good if the rest of us.
I, I should be able to go to that one. I'm gonna be traveling tomorrow. Uh, so I won't be around for the Woodbury one.
I may go to the Woodbury one, except I have to be at the airport at 9:30. So.
Yeah, I can go to that. That's.
I will not be at the Woodbury airport.
I might go for an hour.
That's fine. Yeah. I'll drive myself down.
Do we, so with the inter-local, is it, are we negotiating with the, with Eastmont Piliar or?
No, it's a three-way agreement.
Right.
With, with the fire department, Eastmont Piliar and us.
Have we had any, we haven't had any indication or conversation with Eastmont Piliar select board about, or board members about changes that they'd want to make or see?
I mean, I, I got the impression that they, it's, I think they were fine with it. I mean, I think they were talking like we could just.
Yeah, I think.
You know, it's like the one-third, two-third, you know, if they dissolve, you know, how do they divvy up the assets? You know, what rights the fire department has to do their own business as it's a bit and yada, yada, yada.
I think that's right. I think they were fine with it and ready to sign it. And we said, wait a minute. We just found out about this tonight. We need time to read it.
So I mean, it, it seems pretty basic and, you know, it's, I think, been in place for a fairly long time with that a lot of it. I think we had come back wanting to change things before us.
Ah, okay.
Which is why it was, but I mean, I don't know. I broke through it.
Okay. Well, we'll talk about this at the next meeting. Uh, and we'll go through the highway budget and, um, I don't know if we can finalize it at the next meeting. If we can't, we may have to have another meeting to finish it off, cause we've got to get it done.
We've made a lot of progress, though.
We've made a lot of progress and, uh, when we see the bottom line, maybe we'll be happy. Do you have any sense, Kari? Are we getting down into the single digits?
Yeah, I bet you we put it into the single digits.
I bet you we do.
I bet we're at, uh, eight and a half percent, I think, after considering the, like, the, yeah. I think we found, I think we just probably went through in the general, I think we put, it was close to 40, 4,500 or more than that, a little bit more than that.
I think more than that, yeah.
Yeah. A 20,000 is 1%, so that'd be in 2%.
I don't think we got to another 20, 20,000, but it was.
Yeah, I was hoping we would, but maybe not.
Yeah, but I, we can probably defend 8%. So, but, but we're gonna have to have a conversation about how we're gonna do that, too.
Well, governor's already putting out statements that are entered.
But that was all referring to schools. Yeah. So, okay. Anything else?
Well, there's always revert, reserve funds that we can continue to chip away.
Yeah, take it out of the conservation hall. Oh, God. Okay. Anything else? All right. Meeting adjourned.